Good evening. I would like to-
Let's turn my microphone on and try it again. Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council in regular session. It is Monday, June 3, 2019, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Herrera.
Here.
Counselor Parsons.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Counsel President Freeman.
She is excused tonight.
Counselor Reed.
Here.
Counselor Kohler.
Here.
And Youth Counselor Ferris.
Here.
Thank you. If you are able, would you all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all very much. As you can see tonight, we have a couple of very special orders of business, and we are going to begin with the swearing-in of a Kaiser police officer and our reserve officers. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief.
You guys can come on down. Madam Mayor and Counselors, I'd like to present to you four new Kaiser officers. Paul Quintero on the right nearest you is a full-time officer. He's recently out of the police academy. We hired him last January. To his left is Trenton Webb, then Isaac Brown, and then Colin Brill. Colin's a student at OSU, still a student, right?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Isaac recently graduated from Shemekah with a degree in criminal justice. He works at Home Depot, and Trenton works at, or Trent, rather, works at Lowe's in Albany. I'll tell you what, we have a great hiring process these days. We refined over the past couple of years, and we are making some great hires, and these four are among them.
Thank you, Chief. A gentleman, I forgot to note, is right after the swearing-in, the tradition is we should turn, you turn around and shake everyone's hand right behind you and right down the line here. So I forgot to mention that at the beginning. So if you raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, Omra.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Kaiser.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Kaiser.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
Which I have been appointed.
In and for the City of Kaiser.
In and for the City of Kaiser.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Will, William, Officer Brown.
Congratulations.
Officer Webb.
Congratulations.
Officer Cantino. Congratulations. Welcome.
Nice to see you standing up.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
As we all know, public safety and all public service involves family and friends. If you are here as a member of a family or friends of one of our new officers, would you please stand and be recognized? Family and friends of our new officers. Your support for all of our officers makes a very big difference. You probably already know that, but we can't thank you enough for the time and the sacrifice that you give in service to our community. Thank you all very much. It is now my pleasure to recognize a very distinguished young woman who has been serving this year as our youth counselor. Tonight is Ann Ferris's last night in this office, and we want to take a moment and thank her and also show our appreciation for the work that she has done this year. So with this certificate, we show our appreciation presented to Ann Ferris, City of Kaiser Youth Counselor, 2018-2019, with sincere gratitude and appreciation for your contributions to the Kaiser City Council. Ann, you've done an outstanding job this year. It's truly been a pleasure having you as our youth counselor, and we wish you all the best. Would you tell everybody what you're going to be doing this next year and then what your, ultimately, your college goals are?
Okay, so next year, I will likely, although I'm not serving on City Council as a youth counselor, I am going to apply for the Public Arts Committee Youth Liaison position. I also am going to be continuing as a CTEC student in my senior year and a McNary student. I hope to eventually, when I graduate, attend a college that has an animation major and continue in my passion for animation and visual arts.
Well, if you put in half the effort that you have this year, you will be outrageously successful. Ann, I'd like to make this presentation, and I would like you also to come and shake hands with all of us. You know, this is quite a long time.
Oh, yes.
So we have for you a certificate and a gift card to help you with some of your expenses because we know students are always have unexpected expenses, so we want to support you in that. And then this certificate.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's been an honor.
And for us. Ann Ferris.
So at our last council meeting, we received a graduation announcement from one of our
former city youth counselors, and we look forward to Ann checking in with us from time to time in her career as well. Right now, we'll go to committee reports. Do we have anybody who signed up for any committee reports, Tracy, or for public testimony? Okay. So we don't have any committee reports from committee members here, so we will go on to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have five public hearings tonight, and has anybody signed up for public testimony? I'm seeing no. Is there anybody who would like to address the council on any of the matters not scheduled for public hearing? Okay, then. Let's go on then to our first public hearing, which is a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues, and a resolution certifying the City of Kaiser provides four or more municipal services. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to turn it over to Tim for the next five items. I'm not going to go back to him. He can just, he can just continue.
We'll just power through.
You just power through. All right.
Madam Mayor, City Council, this Oregon law requires that the city prepare a resolution each year requesting revenue sharing dollars. In addition, it also requires us to certify that we provide at least four municipal-type services, which we provide quite a few, in excess of the four that are required. It also requires us to hold a public hearing to discuss how the revenue-sharing dollars are being used in our community. And just as a reference, as we discussed during the budgeting process, the majority of the revenue-sharing dollars are being used to provide for police vehicles. So with that, I would ask you to open the public hearing, take any testimony, and then adopt the attached resolutions. Thank you.
All right. Public hearing is now open, and I don't have anybody signed up to testify on this issue. Did City Council have any questions on the staff report? City Attorney?
Just to clarify for anyone in the audience and for the council, you can do this as one, so I don't think you need to open a separate public hearings, if that's all right, Tim? It's all one hearing on these? Or do they need to be separated out?
They can be one hearing for those two resolutions.
Yeah, that was my understanding. So I guess what I'm saying is if anyone wants to testify in any of the five items, now would be the time to testify, is what I was getting at.
Okay, so clarification, the public hearing is now open on all five of these resolutions and the ordinance. And I don't have anybody signed up. Mr. Wood.
I do think we need to do the other four separately, but we can do all the revenue, the two revenue sharing.
Right, that's right. I'm sorry, you're correct about that.
Okay, so we're on item 7A, the two resolutions. No questions from the audience, no questions from council. Counselor Parsons, would you make the motion tonight, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council, whoops, adopt Resolution R. 2019 declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 certifying that the City of Kaiser provides four or more municipal services.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 certifying the City of Kaiser provides four or more municipal services. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item 7B, resolution amending the stormwater utility fee, amending R. 2014-2504, repealing R. 2018-2866. Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council, consistent with our budgeting process, during that process, we did recommend a 55 cent per ESU increase in the stormwater rate. So the resolution that you'll see attached is to implement that 55 cent increase. It equates to approximately 8% increase for a residential family, and it'll bring in an additional $75,000 for the stormwater fund. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be free to address those. In addition, take any public comment. Thank you.
Right, and I don't think I opened this public hearing, so public hearing is open, and the staff report is incorporated into the public hearing. I don't have anybody signed up to testify on this issue. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the council on this issue? All right, seeing none, closed public hearing. Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 amending the stormwater utility fee, amending Resolution R. 2014-2504, repealing R. 2018-2866.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 amending the stormwater utility fee, amending Resolution R. 2014-2504, repealing R. 2018-2866. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Item 7C, which is an ordinance setting water rates 2020, repealing ordinance number 2018-790. Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council, also as discussed during the budgeting process, we're recommending a 4% rate increase for all of the water rates that are currently in effect. This increase will bring in additional $40,000 during the year, and with that, if you have any questions.
All right. Open public hearing, incorporate the staff report. Any questions on the staff report? Nobody has signed up to testify. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on this issue? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance setting water rates 2020, repealing ordinance number 2018-790.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance 2019 setting water rates 2020, repealing ordinance number 2018-790. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Item 7D, which is a resolution certification of lighting district assessments. Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council, also as we discussed during the budgeting process, we have approximately 200 street lighting districts. The majority of these districts are actually going to be seeing a decrease in their assessment this year, and this is primarily due to a lower administrative fee, although we are also seeing some benefits of energy-efficient lighting that we've put in over the last couple of years. So you'll see all the districts in Exhibit A, and I won't go into detail on each of them, as there's over 200 of them. But again, open, I recommend opening the public hearing, take any testimony, and then adopting the attached resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public hearing is open, staff report is incorporated. Any questions on the staff report? No one has signed up to testify. Is there anyone here from the audience who would like to testify on this issue? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 certification of the lighting district assessments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a Resolution R. 2019 certification of lighting district assessments. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Last, but certainly not least, item 7E, which is a resolution adopting the fiscal year 1920 budget, making appropriations, and imposing and categorizing taxes. Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council, enclosed in the packet this, this week is the committee-approved budget. The Budget Committee met on April 30 and May 2, and deliberated and made a few adjustments. And this is the final version that they have recommended adoption. Tonight, we have the option of we can adopt it as is. You do have the option to make changes if you so choose. I recommend at this point that you deliberate, open the public hearing, deliberate, and adopt or make amendments as you so choose. In addition, adopt the tax rate. And with that, if you have any questions.
All right. The public hearing is open, the staff report is incorporated. Are there any questions on the staff report? Seeing none, I don't have anybody signed up to testify. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council on the budget for this fiscal year? Don't all rush at once. All right. Closed public hearing. Counselor Parsons.
I'm trying to get there, sorry. It's a lot of pages. Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
Oh, got it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 authorizing the city, I'm sorry, wrong one, sorry. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution, no, where is that?
Here.
Sorry, I'm going to try this one more time. Rewind, sorry. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt the fiscal year 1920 budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes.
Wait for it. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 adopting the fiscal year 1920 budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes. Any further discussion? I do want to say for the record that the Budget Committee did a great job this year, and I want to thank Tim Wood and his staff for doing a wonderful job with putting the budget document together for us. High quality as always and very accessible and understandable for people in the community. I really appreciate that. Anything further? Counselor Herrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to follow up on that. You know, the community members that are part of the Budget Committee and spend all the time there, I really appreciate that. I mean, that's kind of our job, but they come out and really spend a lot of time, because that's a lot of hours of listening to a lot of budget stuff, so we appreciate that for all the community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Let's go then to administrative action. Item 8A is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into Kaiser Rotary Community Room Use Agreement 2019. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney?
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. At the last meeting, Council directed staff to move forward with a new long-term agreement with Kaiser Rotary for the use of the community rooms. The main points of the agreement is that Rotary will spend $10,000 on community projects directly benefiting parks, property, and operations in public within the city, together with school projects, and also include 700 hours each year of volunteer time. Each year, the parties would meet to discuss the upcoming year's projects, and Rotary would deliver a report each year detailing their work on the projects. Rotary will communicate with city staff regarding rules and policies for use of the room, and each year, the new president and vice presidents of Rotary will get together with city staff to go over the procedures and rules for use of the community rooms. I'd like to say, staff appreciates all the work of counselors working with Rotary to get us to this agreement, so I'm very glad to see that we were able to put this together. Rotary has signed this agreement, so we have a signed version. So the recommendation is to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter in the agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? All right, seeing none, Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 authorizing the City Manager to enter into an agreement with the Rotary Community Rooms Use Agreement 2019.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 authorizing the City Manager to enter into Kaiser Rotary Community Rooms Use Agreement 2019. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, one absent.
AJ, four days.
Thank you. Thank you.
What?
It's between him and I.
That's a joke.
Oh, no, it's not a joke. I'm not going to speak. Give us me a discussion.
Okey-dokey, then. Moving on. Consent calendar. Counselor Parsons, would you read the items on the consent calendar tonight?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have six items. A is a resolution regarding the evaluation of the City Attorney. B, resolution regarding evaluation of City Manager. C is a resolution establishing classification of the GIS, Geographical Information System Technician. D is a resolution authorizing charges for police time at private events, repealing R. 2016-2693. E is the approval of the May 13, 2019, City Council Work Session Minutes. And F, approval of the May 20, 2019, City Council Regular Session Minutes.
Thank you very much. I'm going to pull items D and E. Are there any other pulls?
B and E?
No.
D and, D is a dog, E is an elephant. I'm pulling those two. No other pulls? Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of consent item, calendar items A, B, C, and F.
Second.
Consent calendar items A, B, C, and F have been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item 9D, City Attorney? Did you want to introduce that, or shall I?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We noted after the agenda was put together that because that authorizes charges under state law, you have to allow comment for any charges or fees, and so now would be the time to invite any comment on that.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here in the audience who would like to comment on the fee adjustment in item 9D, which is the authorizing charges for police time at private events, repealing R. 2016-2693? Thumbs up, all right. That was a public comment. All right. Counselor Parsons.
That's just for D?
Just for D.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of item D.
Item 9D has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, one absent. Item 9F, it was just one correction, let me see if I can get to that page, it was under the proclamation indicated that it was going to be presented on May 29, and that was actually May 22, was the luncheon for the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality. So if that change can be made. Were there any other changes or corrections? Counselor Parsons, as amended?
Yes, I move approval of item E as amended.
Second.
Yes.
You're talking about on page one of the May 20 minutes?
Yes.
Oh, no. May 13.
No, you're right. It was the May 20. I pulled the wrong one, my bad. That was my error. Because you're right, we did that on the 20th, so that was my mistake on that one. So let's go ahead and-
You have two now to adopt, since you pulled the other one, so.
I didn't pull F. I have to, we've got to pull it back.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
I pull it back.
All right, so let's get, let's take care of E. Tell sir.
I move, I move approval of item E, the City Council Work Session Minute.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, item 9E has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. I request that the Kaiser City Council reconsider item 9F for correction. So I would make that motion.
I second.
I'll second, Trey.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to reconsider 9F. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Now the correction from the 29 to the 22nd, and that would correct the minutes for May 20th.
Got you.
Counselor Parsons.
Okay, I move approval of item F as amended.
Second.
Item F has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, Council Liaison Reports. Counselor Herrera, would you like to start tonight?
Yeah, okay, yeah, we had a kind of a busy week with, we had budget with mano-a-mano, which I'm on the board on, we've been very busy getting our budget together. Also, I participated in the Naleo 2020 census, which was a webinar. It was very interesting, and I've learned a lot about our upcoming census and how important it's going to be to get counted. I missed the event Saturday for Ted and Agnes because I had a wedding that was in, my family was in, and I just want to say that, you know, Ted, there was like 700 people in this, I don't know if anybody here attended, but anyway, you know, I, you know, I worked with Ted in so many projects, and he was more than a football coach, more than a guy, he was a total community commitment guy, and I would never, you know, you could never put in money all, all the time and sponsorship, I'll put it that way, that he put into everything from that turf field to every, every sport you can think of, and his, his heart was McNary, and he'll be greatly missed. I just wanted to say that, but, and also to finish my, I want to congratulate the McNary graduates for this year, and especially, well, you're not till next year, right? You've got one more year, okay? And we had our last Cal Club also, Leadership Club, and I really want to thank all of our mentors from McNary High School and the community, mentors from the local churches here that, that took the time every, every, every Thursday to spend an hour and a half with a young person[1651.66] took the time every Thursday to spend an hour and a half with a young person from elementary school, and they made a big difference. We had our last get-together, and you can see the big difference she makes on those kids that go on. Very rewarding, so. That's my two cents, and I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last couple of weeks, I was either on holiday, or it was the fifth week, and so I didn't have anything, so I feel kind of bad, but I do have a lot going forward. So, tomorrow, we have a stormwater meeting at 4:00 PM here at City Hall. On the 11th, don't forget, it's blast camp signups. That was changed originally from today to the 11th. On the 13th, I have Marion County Commissioner breakfast. On the 12th, I have the chamber meeting. And also on the 12th, elementary school is out, so guys, watch out for kids. They're going to be all over the streets playing, especially in this nice weather. And I wanted to ask Mr. Lawyer a question. When does the splash pad open?
That's a good question, and I don't remember what we set the date for, right after schools. I think if school's out on the 12th, it's that next Saturday.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Yeah, right then.
All right, thanks.
15th, I think it is. Is that the Saturday? Does that sound right?
It does sound right, usually, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then I also want to congratulate the McNary graduates. Go Celts! And that's, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Councilor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On May 21, I attended the Kaiser Arts Commission meeting, and we have action on the Kaiser Cultural History Poll Project. I believe it's starting in July. Okay, so we will see activity out there, and they're coming up with different ways to document the process. And they had different ideas as far as like videos, pictures, things like that, but it sounds like they're trying to get some additional attention, maybe some Facebook posts, things like that. So, as you see those, please share. I know it's been a long project in the making. And other than that, it was a pretty, because we were off, so that's about all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Very excited about those, that carving this summer. It's going to look nice.
That's what needs the...
Okay, so it's going to make progress, and so people can watch each of the shapes kind of emerge as he does the carving. Great. Councilor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to start out by extending condolences to the family of Michaela Tryon, who was a Kaiser young lady who died in a crash last night. She was a Roberts High School student, so she was not a McNary student, but still she is a Kaiserite, and our thoughts and prayers go to her family in this very difficult time. I attended the Kaiser Community Dinner, which was, is always a lot of fun, the last Wednesday of every month, and I, Councilor Kohler is always not only there, but doing quite a lot of things in relation to that, so that's a great event, and I would encourage you all to come out to those. I did a couple of school tours, which was really an interesting and fun experience. Forest Ridge Elementary School was here, and there were four different groups that we were taking around. The mayor and I got to shepherd them around the civic center, and that was lots of fun. And I'm really, really sorry, but I can't remember the name of the other school that I, that I toured around. It was a, it's a small, private school, and there were only about eight of them, and anyway, it was wonderful that they came, and I really appreciate their interest in civic goings-on, and again, I really apologize for not noting your name correctly. I'm assuming that Youth Counselor Ferris is going to talk a great deal about the senior goings-on, so I will leave her to do that. And I attended the Building Lands Inventory Housing Needs Analysis Meeting and the subsequent community open house, and some exciting things are happening with that. And we really appreciate the coverage with, from Kaiser Times, because we got a really good crowd out there, and a lot of really good community input. It was a great conversation, and it was great to hear a variety of perspectives, and it's exciting to see that move forward. And thank you, Mr. Brown, for all your very dedicated work in that process. I attended the McNary Right Club's Word Slam last week, thanks, headed by Eric Howell, and it was a fantastic experience. Those kids are so very creative, and his leadership is such that they really explore who they are in various ways. And of course, as an English teacher too, it makes my heart happy to see words being put together in interesting and important ways. The Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting has been canceled for the summer. We will reconvene that the first Thursday in September, and that will be at 6:30 here at the Civic Center. And again, would encourage all to come out for that. In the meantime, we will have the National Night Out, and so that will be a Kaiser, Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association festivity, but without the official meeting. Also have a stormwater committee meeting, and I'm looking forward to that. There's, always learn fascinating things there. And I guess that's about all for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Everybody thought after busyness of May, we're just going to slide into summer. Nope. Councilor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I did attend the Kaiser Community Dinner. We, it was on May 22. We fed right out 300 people. It was a great evening. Mayor was there, and Councilor Reed, and several other people. It's always a great time just to come and associate with each other, visit with each other. So, welcome everybody the fourth Wednesday at St. Edward's Catholic Church. I also attended the Building Needs Analysis, the public meeting, and condolences to Senator Jackie, Jackie Linner's family. She's really going to be missed. Tomorrow, we have the Stormwater Advisory Committee meeting, and then Wednesday is the Claggett Creek Watershed Council meeting. It's too bad you're not liaison for that committee. We have a barbecue this week.
Aw.
I'm thinking about going. A week from this Thursday, the 13th, is the Latino Business Alliance meeting I'll get to go to with Mayor Clark. And also in that same evening, I have the Traffic Bike Ped Committee meeting. And this past week, we celebrated Memorial Day. This coming week, we celebrate or commemorate the 75th anniversary of D-Day Invasion in World War II. Having interviewed hundreds of those of the greatest generation, many of whom were part of D-Day, I have developed great respect and feel a special understanding of the cost of freedom. D-Day was the turning point that decided the future of the world. It brought together strangers who became brothers forever. Their ultimate sacrifices and the sacrifices of those who survived live on today. May we always be proud of our American heritage and do all we can to preserve the liberty and freedom that was bought and paid for at such a great cost.
Amen to that. Thank you, appreciate that. You, Councilor Ferris?
So, as Councilor Reed said, there's a bunch coming up for seniors. There's actually the Choir Senior Farewell Concert going on right now. It's from 7:00 to 9:00. There's a softball awards night coming up as well on Tuesday, tomorrow, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. The graduation assembly is the morning of June 6. I look forward to attending. And the actual graduation is Friday, June 7 at 2:00 PM. The class of 2019 scholarship total, I've been reporting on that as years gone on, the total is $9,516,689 worth of scholarships. So, congratulations. 65% of students completed the FAFSA or ORSA. 261 seniors plan to attend two or four-year colleges. 24 are going into the military, 12 are beginning apprenticeships or trade programs, and so many are heading into amazing fields. Congratulations to you all. The eighth grade graduations are also coming up. Whittakers is on Tuesday from 6:00 to 7:30 next week, as well as Claggett's the next day. Finals week is fast approaching for those underclassmen and juniors still in school, so good luck to all you students. And finally, I'd like to thank Madam Mayor and counselors for this amazing opportunity that I've had. It's been an honor serving with you all and a joy getting to know you. I'll definitely remember this experience for years to come and make sure to keep in touch. It's been amazing to learn about Kaiser and the workings of the local government, so thank you.
And thank you. And once again, it's been fabulous having you as our youth counselor this year, and you've done an amazing job. Wish you all the best in your senior year and beyond. So, just a couple of things to kind of wrap up this, our reports. I did present the proclamation from the Kaiser City Council at the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality Luncheon. It was very, very warmly received, along with a proclamation from the mayor of Salem, Chuck Bennett, and then a very powerful program celebrating 20 years of achievement for the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality. They had Eduardo Angulo, who was one of the co-founders, and then Carmen Urbina from the Deputy Director of the Oregon Department of Education, also spoke at that luncheon. Let's see. Forest Ridge Elementary School, that was a lot of fun with the students. I always enjoy visiting with them, and they always have interesting questions, what they know and what they don't know about their local government, and hopefully that they leave learning a little bit about what happens here and want to pursue life and opportunities in public service. The Midwill Amity Homeless Initiative Steering Committee met on the 23rd, and we are moving forward with an application to the housing and urban development, and I met with two of the representatives this afternoon prior to coming here to reestablish the continuum of care for Marion and Polk Counties, as we heard about in our work session. The HUD representatives have been very supportive and helpful as we're learning, we're figuring out how this is going to move forward, what it's going to look like for governance and for allocating funding to our various social service agencies to effectively serve people who are homeless. I also want to call out the Kaiser Times for a fabulous article about the work of the Midwill Amity Community Action Agency, and Arches, in reaching out to people in our community who are in chronic need, and they are also a very important partner of the work for the continuum of care, because they are managing the information system that we will be using for tracking data on how are we doing, how our money and resources being used, and how are we doing at meeting people's needs. Kaiser Homegrown Theater had a great run of Who Am I This Time? I really enjoyed that. We brought friends to come and enjoy that with us. And watch for Shakespeare in the Park this summer. It's going to be the second week in July for Almsville, and then third week in July right here at Kaiser Rapids Park, to see as you like it. And what else I have? At SCAS, the Salem Kaiser Area Transportation Study, I forward you the email that the Regional Transportation System Plan for 2019 to 2043 was adopted. And just in case people think, oh, good, if you're done until 2044, nope, this gets revised every four years. So, it's kind of a plan, and then you go way out in the future, and I would love to go back and see one that was adopted 20 years ago and see how close we got. Just kind of curious. Probably not very. On Saturday, on Friday, was the Salem Leadership Foundation Annual Fancy Friday, and it featured Salem for Refugees and Satellite Gaming as two of the outreach programs among many, many programs that Salem Leadership Foundation partners with our faith community across the Salem Kaiser area. Very powerful, positive time and a great time to get together and see where, what different things we're doing in our community, through our faith community, to make a very positive impact. Coming up, Kaiser Volcanoes Advisory meets at noon tomorrow, last one before the season begins. Season begins on the 12th with the Volcanoes College All-Stars Game, and yours truly is warming up to throw out that first pitch and get this going. The first regular season game will be on the 14th, a home opener against the Boise Hawks. So, come on out to our Kaiser Salem Volcanoes. Tomorrow evening, I'll be making a presentation at the Dundee City Council with the Council of Governments Executive Director Sean O'Day, talking about the Midwill Amity Homeless Initiative to bring them up to speed on the work on the continuum of care. At this time, Yamhill County has chosen not to become part of the two-county continuum of care, but the Dundee City Council wants to know more, and in the interest of making sure that they have all the information that they need, we are going to go out there and visit with them. On Wednesday afternoon, the COG, Council of Governments Budget Committee will meet, and then the Executive Committee will also meet in preparation for the board meeting later this month. Thursday will be the Midwill Amity Area Commission on Transportation, and I will forward you the agenda packet for that. And people have probably noticed that paving project on I-5 is underway, and it's just going to be that way, crowded, plan ahead, extra time between now and October to get that project done. This coming Saturday will be funeral services or a celebration of life for Evelyn Franz, who was a tremendous asset to this community in celebrating our history and helping us establish our heritage museum. She loved our history, loved our community, and it's going to be a great way to show her family how much she has meant to us as well. On the 11th is a groundbreaking for the agricultural complex at Shemecuda Community College. And I think, who else? Councilor Herrera, you're going? Somebody else said that they might be going. And Councilor Reed? So, I'm hoping to get there from work, traffic permitting. On the 11th, Personnel Policies will meet, and then on the 14th will be a retirement reception for Shemecuda Community College President Julie Huckstein, who has done a masterful job leading that institution, and I really appreciate the work and the focus she's had on the success of all of our students. All the best, Julie. You worked your tail off for everybody. We appreciate you. That's all I've got, so I would like then to turn this over to City Manager, Other Business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy?
Nothing, thank you.
Jim?
Nothing as well.
Michelle? Chief?
Sure, Councilor Parsons commented on this briefly, but I'll remind folks that blast camp registration starts June 11. That's next Tuesday at 9:00 in the morning. It's online registration only, and you can get there at www.kaiser.org/polic. Camp this year is not four days, it's just three days, the 16th, 17th, and 18th of July. Again, registration is June 11. Camp is July, 16th, 17th, and 18th. It's three days instead of four for two reasons. One, by the, we keep the kids so busy, by the fourth, they were exhausted. They were dragging. And two, some of the families taken, began, leave for a vacation on Fridays, we were losing some kids. So, we thought, let's just roll back to three days this year and see what that's like. A third thing is blast camp, blast is an acronym standing for bringing law enforcement and students together. And I'm not seeing that on some of the literature, so I want to remind folks of that. Finally, after 30 years, Jeff Coons retired last Friday. 30 years just with this city. He was a very valuable part of policing in this community and a real valuable part of my administration, and I'm excited to see him go. Thank you.
Phil?
Nothing, thank you, Chris.
Mr. Brown? On the 11th, we are preparing to have our last committee meeting of the Kaiser Revitalization Plan, Citizens, Phoebe, Citizens Advisory Committee. I don't know why that's hard to say. Anyway, so it is the final draft, and that will then move forward from that committee to Planning Commission, and then eventually be in front of you, so.
Wow.
Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
And I will also mention that Dan Kelly with the Police Department retired, or is retiring after 20 years of service with the department. And so, it's pretty amazing also, we have a lot of longtime folks who have been here a long time that are all getting ready to retire, so we've got to figure out what we're going to do.
Well, I think we just saw a little bit of that solution.
Right.
Just sworn into this evening.
The incredibly young kids coming into the department. That's right.
Yes, perspective.
That's right.
Yep. But as Chief said, we've been able to recruit some very talented folks coming on, and then as some of our senior experienced people retire, they're also be able to spend some time with them prior to retirement, I hope, and help pass on the great practices and the great culture that we have in Kaiser Police. So, really appreciate your leadership in that. I want to backtrack to Mr. Lawyer. We heard about a grant that we got, a Spire Grant.
Yes. Through the Oregon Emergency Management and Marion County Emergency Management, city applied for a Spire Grant and the acronym?
State Preparedness and Incident Response Equipment, and that's not because I'm smart. I was smart enough to print it off.
Applied for a grant for a water purification trailer. Basically, what that is, is a unit that will provide drinking water out of contaminated water, up to, I think it's 4,000 gallons a day. We were successful in obtaining that grant. We will, it'll be a little bit, their final phases of the grant process is not complete, but the state will notify us when we will receive the piece of equipment. The way the grant works is the state actually will own it for five years. We will house it, have it here for our use and others' use as necessary, and after five years, it becomes the full property of the city of Kaiser. So, I would expect probably, maybe toward the end of 2019, we might see it. I think it's going to take a little while, because it hasn't even been ordered yet. So, it's going to have to take a while to produce and all that, so I'll keep you updated as I get updates on when we will receive it.
Right. Well, and great work to Jennifer Warner and who did she say worked with around that?
Matt Reyes.
And Matt Reyes, putting this together and lending the grant. Great job. All right, that's, that's it?
That's it.
Okay. And let's go on to Written Communications. Councilor Parsons, do you have one?
Yes, I have.
Or two?
Sorry, I have two. Yes, I do. So, it's kind of a carryover from the last council meeting. I did receive two more emails from two area businesses, excuse me, on Cherry Avenue concerning the Kaiser Fest that I wanted to read into the record. The first one is from Michael and Ivan Klein. They own Aspen Grove, and they said, "This is our first year experiencing Kaiser Fest as a new business and also as landlords in the Kaiser area. We were very pleased with the festival and all of the activities that surrounded our clinic. Our renters were so excited to find out the festival was right up the street from us that they all got involved in some way to get to know the community better and what it has to offer, and we had..." and what it has to offer, and we had such a great time, and we're looking forward to next year. Sincerely, Michael and Yvonne Klein." Second one is from Kimberly Strand. We all know Kimberly from the PGN Lodge, 420 Lounge. "This year's festival was a success start to finish. It's no secret I've had huge issues with the festival of the past several years. I was told my business was not chamber-worthy. Times have changed. Special thanks to Danielle, who met with me in person, listened to the issues, then we worked out a plan. We worked out the parking for Chamber staff, vendors, and the community. The detour and no parking signs worked fabulous. It was really nice to have the street clear for local business access, pedestrian traffic, and people coming and going to the festival. There still seems to be an issue at Alder with people running the stop sign. If we put a police officer there, they can write tickets all day long. A few of the bands had trouble finding the load-in entrance. But I also want to thank Dave Warrick and Scott White for making the rounds, checking in with me and making sure things were running smoothly. They really made us feel included. And I'm looking forward to working with the Chamber and Danielle again next year." That's all I have. Thank you.
That's lovely. Put these in the pile for the record.
The other one's on my computer. I forwarded it to Tracy.
Tracy, okay, that's been forwarded. Thank you very much. I'd like to circle back to something Counselor Herrera brought up, and that's with the census. So I get periodic outreach from the U.S. Department of Commerce regarding the census. And we can't emphasize enough to people in this community that with the census next year, it is very, very important that we be as complete in not only responding, but also in the responses because it does translate into dollars for our community that are allocated based on population. So I encourage everybody, be aware. When the census comes, participate. They are also still hiring for positions, and please go to their website to check on that as well if people are interested in jobs with the Census Bureau. So I wanted to get that out there. I also want to give a shout out to Debbie Lockhart. I got a letter from an older disabled member of the community. I'm not going to read it into the letter because I think some of the information was confidential. But I asked for Maria Kelly, Marlene's daughter, for her assistance for where to send this information. And Debbie took her time to navigate what turned out to be a not straightforward way of getting information. But because Debbie really believed this was important to get to the right people, she persevered with it and did get the information to Adult Protective Services. And I want to give her a shout out for really taking the time and working hard to make sure that this person's needs got to where they need to be. And hopefully, her issues have been addressed and taken care of. So thank you, Debbie, for doing that. I really appreciate it. That is all I have for that. Agenda input, on June 10th, 2019, we will have a work session, and we are going to have a work session on the sidewalk obstructions issue. So I'll be at 6:00.
I will be unable to attend that because my daughter's graduating eighth grade that evening, but others will be there.
All right.
Others who are more directly involved in this topic. That's you, Nate.
And this issue has come up many, many times over the years. A lot of us have heard it or tripped over, things that are left on the sidewalks. There was a big discussion several years ago. I remember Counselor McCain was involved in that conversation regarding basketball hoops being left indefinitely on sidewalks, so people are forced off the sidewalk to go around if they are able to do so. But there are other issues with incursions onto the sidewalks and the ability for people, especially with mobility issues, to be able to walk safely in their own neighborhoods. So in response to a great deal of council interest on this, and thank you, Counselor Smith, for bringing this to our attention, email that you received, that we're going to go ahead and have, start a conversation on that once again because we all have different reasons for wanting to address it, but I think ultimately it's an accessibility and fairness issue and safety. So we will have that discussion next Monday at 6:00. If you're interested, come on down. Then we will meet on June 17th in regular session at 7:00 PM, and then July 1st at 7:00 PM in regular session. That is all I have. Is there anything else for the good of the order? All right, it is 7:58, and we are adjourned.